It'll go down, bounce, come back and that. So again, I'm not very long, but my whole thing is, like I said, I showed this to the mayor early summer and told him what I would like to see. And at that time, I was looking at possibly somewhere outdoors. And again, if that is a possibility, we'll go further down the line. I've already been in contact with designers and the west or the Green Township trustee over there, and he advised me that he is willing to get with me, sit down and pretty much go over how they got their part. He will give me all the contacts, what the calls were and everything. I've already had several people that have saw this that would like to be on a committee. If we can start something like that. Again, location, equipment, funding. I'm not going to come in here and ask for any money. Again, I just wanted to let you see what I brought to the mayor to see if this is something that I could hopefully get started and hopefully bring to Greensburg at some point. I know it's going to take a lot of time and that, but I'm hoping to again, get grants and that to get that funded and hopefully eventually build somewhere near Greensburg, so.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Also, I met with Josh today and we talked a little bit about this project. I think this is a very good project for the city to go because we want the location structures. We hope we get, we got people who are interested in the building. I think that's really important. I also think that it's a multi-building, which will also have the agriculture part, which we kind of talked about at the start of the project, of it being agriculture and then have an agriculture museum to celebrate our heritage in this area. And then when Chief brought this, I'm going, wow, why don't we tie everything in and make a great place to put this in. We did have a study done from the RC Engineering Company, which was the company that did the first world in St. Mary's. And I will mail that, or I'll mail, send you an email with that information so that you can see, you know, what kind of costs were looked at on the building. But we do have some people that's interested in the school. As I've been talking, Brian's been working hard with different individuals. Anything, Tammy's been working with some individuals, talking about the museum part, and it's starting to fall together. Now, I'm leaving, so I'm going to keep going. It's a piece of the puzzle that I think that will help the community down the road. And I just don't want this, lose these buildings or lose them to where they're just used for storage. And the church is willing to work with us, and I think this is something that we need to address. And I'm not asking for anything. I just want to let you know that the group is still working towards that project. And I think it's what kind of came about and keeps everything starting to click. And it feels, feels to me really good.
If there are already people interested in property to do these kinds of things, why does the city?
Because a lot of, some of the people that are interested in property are looking at funded sources, that you have partnership, looking at this about in some way, shape, or form equally in some of these programs. There is a community match. If the city was able to put up property that could be a community match, that can actually help their cause. I don't want to to mislead and say, you know, tomorrow we're going to have them all lined up or anything like that. There's still things that come into play. But one of the concerns that we had in talking to some of these developers are making sure that they can take on a project like that. The last thing we want to do is to hand it over just to any developer, have the developer get in there, have them, and when something happens, have the buildings enough done, because we're not, we don't want to make an investment of this level into a public space and have it next door to a abandoned building or something along those lines. There is an outside possibility that, you know. Oh, I'm sorry. Is this thing on? I'm sorry. I, where did you pick off?
I'm reading your lips.
Okay. But, but bottom line is, I don't want, I don't want to mislead you guys and think we have, you know, we're going to have people lined up tomorrow that all want, particularly when we talk about the property, when we're talking about the school building. We also have people interested in the, in the administration building. But particularly with the, the school building, we want to make sure that that developer can handle a project like that, because there are some structural issues with that, with that building. And it's going to take someone that knows how to handle those types of, of structures. And Darren's question was, why do they need the municipality? And I said, some of the financing structures and some of the opportunities through the state require a partnership with the municipality. And the way we see it is that if, in, in a lot of those, they require some sort of city match or community match. And we feel that that property can actually be a match there to help, help boost the development of that property, whatever that turns out to be. We're very, we're very keen on the fact that we do not have a need for any more low-income housing, so that's not on the books at this time.
Do we know how much the diocese will be willing to sell the property to us?
Gee, well, I don't understand. I'm not going to give a figure. My understanding is they'll work with us and we'll go from there.
You're not going to give a figure because you don't want to give it in public or because you?
I haven't, we haven't really tied it down, so, yeah.
I guess I just, I'd be interested to see the engineering study and the cost before, even if there was no cost to obtaining the property, there's still a liability for the city, there's still other costs we'd have to incur. And I think it's something, you know, I, I think the ideas we talked about are great, and these are good reasons, but I think we also have to look at the liability and one of those concerns, does it justify regardless of, even if the cost was nothing? There's, there's some concerns we definitely want to look at and consider there.
We, we have a lot of those figures. We, we have, we have the same talks around, you know, because we want to do due diligence in any sort of endeavor like this. And so we, as the mayor said, he does have the figures for that and also some estimates on carrying costs of what the, just the basics would be. So the mayor would be able to get that, get those to use. Those are all, all valid points and things that need to be discussed.
Well, I'll get this, the, you know, with this study that was done. And this was the regional group that studied it the first time. And so that's why we went back. We got, we did get funding from the historical reservation group out of Indianapolis to help pay for part of the grant. Then we used added funds for the other part of it to do this, this study to find out exactly if it's got worse, if it's got better, or had it got better on the other end. But it's not as bad as I thought it would be in the engineering. I just want to make sure that this project still has some life going on for now. So that's why my project, I will get you this information and the other information you asked about. And it's something that you guys can discuss. You guys will still be around.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, Brian.
Okay. Chief Garrett.
Good evening. Per information, I'm in the board of works earlier today before this meeting, and I presented to about the MSA air packs. And they have okay buying the air packs from Donley Fire Service at a price of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-five cents with approval of the council, of the city council for the funding from the accumulate fire fund. And that is why I'm here with getting approval for funding for this project. And it's all pending upon your approval.
Is this a sole source? Is this a sole source?
No, there were two bids.
There were two bids.
This was the packet.
That was the lowest bid.
Yeah, that was the lowest bid.
Another thing I can add, Chief Paul, is that you say they're seventeen years old?
They're fifteen years old.
Fifteen years old, what they presently have. He also made a comment that.
They only have a lifespan of fifteen years.
It's a high dollar, but it's a low dollar, the legal action taken against the city or something like that.
What do we use this, what do we use this spot for?
It's, it's for accumulate, it's for fire equipment, whatever we need, purchase a truck, payment on the truck. It's for.
I mean, it's for things like this.
Yes. And also, in March of the first of two thousand twenty, we lose seven airbags, which is about seventy thousand dollars worth of equipment. So that is why I'm presenting it right now to get all this going, or it'll take ninety days, approximately, once we agree on purchasing it, to get it into the station.
Good.
I'll make a motion. We pass ordinance to nineteen thirty-six on the first reading.
Any other questions? Well, fair to say I.
I.
Thank you.
Either side, Steve.
Okay.
Good evening again. Tonight, I am bringing forth two ordinances that we have discussed in the past. These ordinances have been sent to the city attorney. The first one is the fireworks ordinance. Did not know if anybody had any questions on that before the possibility of a motion.
I know we have a gentleman here tonight that's very interested in this. He doesn't score living. Just wondering if you could just briefly highlight what the changes are, important things that are in the ordinance.
And the biggest thing is really that we spelled out here was when fireworks could and cannot be let off. Again, we have been receiving several calls over the past few years, reference to issues throughout the year and the timing. So on this, the, where the ordinance reads that you may not limit the use of customer fireworks, and one of those is between the hours of five P.M. and two hours after sunset on June twenty-ninth, June thirtieth, July first, second, third, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth. And then on the hours of ten A.M. to midnight on July fourth, and between the hours of ten A.M. on the thirty-first, and one A.M. on January first. So that is the biggest thing. The rest of the ordinance is pretty much stating what can and cannot be let off at those times. And then the possibility of fines and that. So everything else would pretty much be in line with the state law as meaning the age, nobody under the age of eighteen, of course. And then the property purposes of if you are on your own property, that's fine. If you're on somebody else's property, you have to have the permission of that property owner to let off any fireworks. So that's pretty much the highlights of this ordinance.
Thank you.
Yes.
Does that answer your question?
No. Brian, could you come up? Because there is a section in here, number five, something will follow for him. It says that the fireworks set aside the list of dates.
Yeah, make sure.
And one of these. So it's on number five down there, I think we'll cover. Brian does fireworks for birthday parties, weddings, anniversaries. So he does them all throughout the year. He has a standard that he has to go by to let these off. He just doesn't, you know, took it up and that's what his specialty is. We had a great talk before this meeting, sir, and I wanted to make sure that we didn't hurt his business. But also, there's also, you know, we've seen approval from the city hall on those special occasions. It's just the rank of days.
Yes, sir. And not only is it me, there's nine other shooters in this county, in the city. There's four in the city itself that is an active shooter enlisted with and certified. So it's not. Call them higher net. Politically correct. A certified pyrotechnic gets called a shooter, just to clarify. That's what we call it, because you're the one on the butt. You're not on the trigger, you're on the butt. And the thing is, is we get product all the year round. Containers come in from overseas and they come into stores. We go buy product. And our product, like I just picked up three hundred and some shells just last week. And the thing is, is before we can go and do our shows, we like to shoot the product off to see what the product is. I understand we need some stipulations on it. I'm as guilty as anybody else can say that they aren't. You know, I am guilty on that. I understand that we need something to say, hey, that the stipulation is, this is timing, this is the way it is. But what scares me here is, is I'm taking this as we cannot shoot it any of the days besides the days that are listed here. That's not good news for the pyrotechnic business. That is not good news at all. Because when we get stuff, we like to shoot it and see what it is before we go. We, we got to know if it's, I don't want to say safe, but we got to know what it's going to break, how it's going to go, if it's a pancake, if it's a straight cake, and what it is before we go to a public outing and see what it is. And just because our residence is in town, this is limiting us to doing nothing except on these days of occurrence in this listing. Most of your ordinances, and I'm not trying to bring in other counties, but like Rush County, Rible County, Batesville City Ordinance, the city, Rushville City itself, most of theirs doesn't regulate it to certain days of the year. The extended hours go on certain days of the year. But the, the time is usually like an hour after dark, two hours after dark, something like this, where there's still a little bit of open range, but still reasonable for other people. I agree. Do we need to be, I'm guilty of that, I might go say I'm not guilty of this, out shooting fireworks at ten-thirty at night? Probably not. But in the summertime, that's when it gets dark. School nights, I totally understand. Early evening, and that's where the, you know, the hour after dark comes in. You've got enough time, it gets dusk, go out, set up, boom, you're good. Tear it down. Debris stays on your property. You know, I'm not, I'm not against anything at all about the property, the characteristics of that, state law stuff, but totally agree with that, totally. I just really think that being limited to certain days of the year is going to bite the professional shooters, but with having that many in town. And, and not only, I mean, not only is it just for us, for our benefit, I mean, it's other things too. I mean, I know that they've mentioned maybe, maybe for like the Christmas walk, they've mentioned maybe a fire will show up there or something like that. This would totally put that out the door.
I don't think it does. I don't think it does any of that. I think what it does is it makes you have to plan a little more though, because section five does allow it outside these times with the approval of city hall. So that just means, hey, I got to call city hall, tell them, hey, I'm looking to do this on this date. Is there an issue with it? And maybe, maybe have to get a form or something. But it, it just requires, it requires a little more planning, but it doesn't prohibit any of that.
But what about product safety on our end?
If you're going to test something, then you'll have to, you just have to call and say, hey, you know, I've got product I want to test on this date, you know, and just get an approval to test it as well. So you may have to plan that. According to, I, I think if this, this ordinance doesn't prohibit any of that, it just says, hey, I have to plan on.
What is the, what's the harm that we're trying to prevent by having them come to city hall and ask to shoot off their fireworks at a point, at some point other than we could fly, or? What are we trying to accomplish by having?
I know we've gotten several complaints.
The, the modern ordinance right now says eleven o'clock and twelve o'clock at which in, which in is probably stretched pretty thin. It don't give them a leg to stand on. I mean, if they get a call from the neighbors saying, hey, they're shooting fireworks and they come out to do something, by ordinance now, it says eleven o'clock. And that's part of the problem. Which in, I understand, totally agree.
So is the complaint that, do they, do they work with me that they're just too, shoot them off too late?
You've got people going out and shooting them at ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night with school students around, school kids in the house.
Or you actually have business owners that sit outside during the day and shoot them off downtown. And people think that shots are being fired downtown. And you have all city and county officers responding because you don't know what's going on downtown because of rich. So.
Who's shooting off fireworks at midnight?
Uh, there's people. Yes. Westminster.
They do it for attention.
It's kind of waste the money, isn't it?
And it is. That, that is not us. I mean, we, we do this to, for enjoyment. We don't do it for profit. I mean, we don't want to say that. We do it for profit too, because it's part of our living. But we don't do it to sell fireworks. We're not selling fireworks. We're not doing that. We are putting the shows on for organizations, nonprofit organizations, families that have a graduation party, you know, hall gross, stuff like that. Usually, most of your five oh one C threes usually get a hold of those, because we donate a lot of that to these people that really helps out. Things that they couldn't before, we can give them a good show, which in is.
Do you have a license or certification?
I'm fully certified, sir.
So maybe, maybe we can.
License bonded and everything.
Well. Quote-unquote, for one point four shows, you're, you ain't got to be, but since I shoot pro lawn, I had to take classes for it. Now, that's one for you. I cannot shoot one three. I do not shoot one three product. You can go buy what I shoot yourselves. We just combine it with music in the show and put everything together and make it a good show. But the, the big problem is, is they need a leg to stand on, which in they do. They can't just have people out shooting fireworks whenever they want, all times of the night and everything else. And right now, the modern ordinance says eleven o'clock, which in is kind of late. But that's why a lot of your cities go and they, they put it up like an hour past dark. So like this time of year, seven o'clock, you're done. You know, and if, if you're not done shooting by seven o'clock, it gives them the right to come and say, hey, now you're breaking law, which in is awesome.
What I'm thinking though is, I mean, I, I, I like the ordinance the way it is. I think, but maybe we could add a section in here for, that allows more leeway if they're certified or, and I don't know what that verbiage is, but maybe that's something you could work with the chief and it kind of helped come up with some verbiage to add another paragraph in here to maybe allow some flexibility for that. I mean, we, we don't get crazy and carried away with it, but it, it's still worth, you don't have to call every single time you want to test something.
Right.
But, you know, I mean, and, but at the same time, it doesn't just allow everybody to go out and just shoot up, I mean, there's, there's a license or certification you have to hold to, to be able to, what do you think, or if that's even worth while to discuss?
Well, the one thing with all the license certification is, is you couldn't go out in your front yard and shoot off on the weekend. If, if you had a family get together, you couldn't go shoot fireworks off in your, in your front yard for the weekend. You know what I mean? Something like that would totally put it out the window, because if you wore something like that, then you're saying you've got to be certified to do it. But you can go to the store and buy them. You know what I mean?
Well, and I, I, you know, I agree. I think this is a good ordinance. Maybe, maybe we need to, you know, tweak up little things in it. But if to your own ambition, we needed something to kind of corral what we have.
Totally.
And tighten things up.
Totally understand that, totally.
I just, I know Chief was talking about, I hear fireworks go off in, in April, and you've got the county and the city and everybody, you know, looking for the shooter. There, I said it in the right tense. Yeah. So, you know, it's not that we're trying to come down and be hard on your business or anyone else's, but we just need to have some kind of regulation. I think you understand that.
Totally, totally.
So, as, as the terms define it in the statute, is a license required? Who, who's licensed companies carry?
No, ATF, ATF, or you go through classes before you can go to ATF is your one-three, but we go through a training school for pyrotechnic training.
You said you got a cert. Who, who issues your certification?
The training school.
Training school.
Yes. You go to classes to actually shoot.
There is no state license.
No, no, no. We get certification saying to, if you took classes, know how to handle, you know, the rules and how to, stuff like that. I'm not ATF, I'm not one-three. I can't shoot your Fourth of July giant willows in the air. I can't do that. Yes, you're right. It's part of our, they do the one-three shows.
So, so my, my question, I guess, maybe we don't really answer tonight. So the statute requires what consumer fireworks is. I, I'm curious if the statute goes on to say that only people who have the certification can shoot these consumer fireworks.
Negative, true. Again, negative toward consumer fireworks can be bought if you have one. Yes, sir. That's the difference between consumer and display.
Good. Jeff, you got a comment?
Yeah.
Come on in.
Jeff, I'm sorry, I'm in the chamber tonight, but. And just because I just wanted to ensure that I'm clear on this as well. I think you answered the question. For six years, I, I hired and managed the pyrotechnic show for the high school football team. Reese Burger, and whenever they scored a touchdown, we would shoot off, when they played one, we'd blow one off. And those games are usually over about nine to ten. But our, my pyrotechnician was certified ATF trained. He could do big fireworks show, other shows, things like that. But he did use a class D. I just wanted to make sure that when we fit that, we try to bring that program back to the football team. This won't affect that either. I always call the police department and say, hey, this is Jeff, walking tonight. We've got a fireworks show that might be going on. You might get some reports. That's what it's all about. So, and I just want to make sure that, but I think that when you read that.
Number five takes care. It's just like you said, you've got a lot of money on the project.
It's actually section three, number five.
Well, yeah.
You know, if, if, if the harm is people are shooting them off too late, why don't we just have an ordinance that says you can't shoot off an hour after dark and then expand the times that we like for, to do your Z. And that's, that's the least, the smallest touch, the lightest touch, you know, on these businesses. It sounds like, well, they have, they already are sort of regulating themselves, but with the certification.
Well, the other problem we're running into is we're getting a lot of phone calls, the city hall does too, on people with PTSD, animals and stuff like that. And that's why when they're doing it year-round and that, I mean, you see, you're seeing a lot of cities that are actually going away from fireworks and they're doing visual fireworks, because the loud booms are affecting people with PTSD. Again, this is just some of the phone calls we're getting. And people ask me why we're not doing anything, we're not doing our job, we're getting yelled at. So I just want to present something in front of the council, see what you guys want. Like I said, it doesn't matter to me, we can sign them all day long, they're going to be state law and that. But this is just phone calls that we're getting yearly about, why are you guys not doing anything? So I just would like some direction on our department's hat on. Are we going to enforce it all or nothing? Because like I said, we can enforce state law all year round, I don't care. I just don't know if we need to do any stricter due to complaints we receive every single year.
Which in I do, I do agree with, there needs to be a shorter time limit at night. I mean, through the week, like I said, I've been guilty of it, I have. But a lot of your counties, like you said, are going to the hour after dark or whatever. That way you've got a little bit of room to go and do what you have to do and still be within regulation. Then that gets them the leg to stand on where, hey, if the neighbor calls or somebody calls with an issue, hey, it's an hour after dark, you can, now you guys got your, your leg to go with it. I just want to make sure that we don't go, not only is it, it appears, it knows the music.
What do you came in, that's what we did not know Jeff, that had his concerns about too much football.
Everybody keeps going, but you can't ask.
I had my way.
What, what needs to be changed on the, on this then? I, I think we're good the way it is. Just to understand what's going on here and.
Yeah, but it don't, I mean, it don't give you, if, if you go to the store and come back, it don't give you no leeway at all for any fireworks. Unless you, we, you have to wait for the next day to come in here and then go to city council and come back. Where if you go by a fountain, they gonna make no noise. It's still a firework. You know what I mean?
So actually, that's, that's described there as actually one of the ones that, uh, depending on certain fireworks, you're allowed, like your sparklers and I like that because you don't have a lot to. That's actually mentioned in there. Uh, so, but no, like I said, I.
That was my last, that was my last question was.
It's not stuff.
Who, who is city hall? This is city hall.
So we've done in the past is they'll call in here and they'll speak with the friend, um, desk receptionist and she will call me saying, hey, I've got this one call and they're wanting to do this. Are you okay with it? Yes. It's kind of like flying and throwing around the courthouse. We get several calls a year saying, hey, a certain group has already got permission, commissioning, council, the county level, apply the, uh, fly this drone. We're just looking to be aware of it. Great, understood. So it's just, it's a courtesy, pretty much a courtesy thing. It doesn't need to go in front of the council if you approve. Like I said, it's just as long, it's kind of like, uh, motorcycle rides and that. We're getting permission or they're getting permission to come here in our city. I guess.
I mean, I, I'm probably thinking unless there's an issue with, for the most part, we're probably not going to deny unless it's, you know, really late request or something obscure or.
Well, I mean, if you're not going to deny them.
Okay, so your, your concern is if you go and you're getting ready, you're prepping for a show and you, uh, you buy a cake. And you're not exactly sure what it's going to do and you need to figure out if it's going to fit within your area that you want to do. Then you're saying this ordinance doesn't allow you to test that.
It, it's, s- s- sticks you in one spot. You don't have the, and I don't know how to say it. Okay. I apologize for that. It just don't give you the open that you kind of need to do that. Um, like if I went to the store and I bought it and I came back, I can't go and see what it does. My show's tomorrow. I can't go and see what it does that night because this restricts you down the same that you can. You have to go to the hall first to get the permission before you can see what it is. It's just, I think there needs to be a little bit of openness there. Where it gives you a little bit of room to do something and they still have the leg to stand on totally.
Do you know how many, um, actual shooters within the county that we have here?
There's four in the city that I'm almost fully aware of.
I know two. Now I know three. So, um, I don't know. Would it be of any benefit to know exactly who those people are?
Good. And like I said, they could easily, it's kind of like someone that's coming to town or on property that has to put an animal down. They'd call us and say, hey, we're getting ready to do this. Do we have your permission? Absolutely. Four of my officers have to put down an animal. We always let dispatch know, hey, you might get reports of a gunshot. We're putting down an animal. So it's just that courtesy. I mean, like I said, it doesn't have to be a date process. It could be just a call and say, hey, I'm getting ready to test this off. Great. Boom. It's done.
Can we maybe amend that number five instead of approved by city hall, approved by, what is it, police department or police chief?
That's fine. And then what I, what we normally do is we just do a amendment to district dispatch. That way they get any calls, they're aware. Nope, not a problem.
That work for you?
That's, that's awesome because that gives you a little bit of, and, and that gives you a little bit of leeway to do what you need to do for, for anything. I mean, you don't want to go in front of people who not know what you do.
Don't go buy a firework at nine and they want to set off at eleven.
I understand that.
The, the minimum would be in section three, not number five.
It's number five is what it says.
So number, number five is whereas, so that's not the actual ordinance. The actual ordinance is section three.
Oh, okay.
So that's where we.
Jeff, can you discuss? Um, this would be on a first reading. And if you feel that something needs to be changed or whatever, we still have, you know, next meeting. And, and I thought it was a great idea to have my broad cake, but I didn't think of that part of it. So much I thought about Jeff. Football. Just football.
Good. Thanks for listening.
Oh.
Thank you.
I move to, uh, pass ordinance twenty nineteen thirty nine, a first reading, amend in section three, strike the city hall replacing with the.
Police department?
Police department.
Okay, so we also need to instruct that city hall number five?
I mean, we can. I think that's just quoting. It's, it's a whereas, it's not.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, any other questions? Say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Okay. Hopefully this will be a little bit less controversial. Uh, the next one is something that was brought to my attention by a couple of council members. Uh, looking at possibly doing, uh, in the city of Greensburg, uh, which is the UTV side by side vehicle. I had spoken a little bit with, uh, Councilman McKenzie last week and some of those corrections have been made. From the actual first ordinance you got, uh, right now it's going to be actually defined as instead of the recreational, um, road or off-road recreational vehicles. It's now going to be, um, classified as UTV side by sides. Um, we made sure that, let's see, another thing that was changed was when they come in and, uh, register the UTV. They had to show not only proof of address, contact information, but they had to show proof of insurance and proof of registration through the Department of Natural, um, Resources. A registration sticker will be given to them by the police department.
Will, will all of them have DNR?
Yes. Yes. They have to have DNR beyond the county limits also. Another.
They don't have to have, they. If they want to drive it on the sixth street, then we're going to require, some of them require them to get the, they'll have to do both. Some of them, if you're, if you don't take it off your private property, you don't have to.
Right, correct.
The DNR.
Correct.
So, but if they want, we're going to town if you're, if they're going to have to make that trip to those your motor vehicles and.
Yes, correct. A couple of other things that were changed were, uh, we showed that if you were operating on the motor vehicle or on the roadway, they have to have two operating headlights. Um, one tail brake light and. Oh yes, turn signals must be on, uh, the vehicles. Uh, the other thing that was changed was that the fines would be paid through the Greensburg Clerk Treasure. And I believe, is that all the?
I think that's it.
That we went through?
Under section three, if, if, city hall going to issue the sticker like very, very often, where's this?
We are. That is, and that's one thing I did, uh, leave off is that sticker and that they will need to come through the Greensburg Police Department. And, uh, so that will need to be amended and added in for the next, uh, if this passes on the first reading, uh, to be placed in there. And again, it is something that, and I can email you the form that we're looking at for the, uh, inspection.
I understand there's going to be a cost to the stick. It might be minor.
Right.
Why wouldn't we at least have them recover if it's ten dollars or five dollars, whatever it is?
You could easily do that.
We ought to put something in. That way it's not a loss. So we're going to recoup that.
That's fine.
I mean, it's.
Right.
I'm not saying it's going to be.
A hundred dollars?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be something crazy, but.
Correct.
But it, but at least it pays you back.
Pays for the sticker?
Yeah.
I have no problem with that.
I was going to be administrative fee because of the cost to it. I mean, people taking the time to go through all that. So there ought to be some cost to that.
I don't think you're looking at anything over ten dollars personally.
That's, I mean, yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah. So add, amend that where you get to pay the ten dollars through the.
The dollar fee to the police department.
Police department, yes. And then that will go straight into the general fund.
Do you have to wear a helmet?
You've got to be over eighteen.
You don't have to wear a helmet? You don't have to wear a helmet.
He says the operator must be eighteen years of age or older.
They have a reward on them.
Yeah.
So Chief, there was one up to me about, uh, this deceiving about golf carts. They're making some pretty fancy golf carts now that have all of these features on them. Is that something that we want to tackle with this ordinance?
Um.
Do we, or do we even want to go there?
I like where it says in the updated ordinance, no golf carts or four wheelers are allowed on city streets.
It looks like it's the order of preference of the stat, of that vision of the statute.
It's a very lengthy. Yeah.
Does it, does that statute exclude golf carts, four wheelers?
No, no. A lot of your cities like Rushville, they allow golf carts, but they do not allow UTVs. Batesville, I can't remember about, uh, they actually, they allow both.
Who'd you say?
Rushville, they allow golf carts but not UTVs.
I think, I thought Rushville has an UTV now.
I don't know that it passed. Cause I spoke with the councilman and said that he has not seen where it had passed. So he, he has not seen it.
My turkey is a running goose.
Right.
I'll be on my golf cart.
No, you'll be on foot.
He'll have to run fast to catch the turkeys.
So no chase, we're making it as ten dollars.
And I, well, I guess the other thing is bringing up the mayor's point of helmets and that. Do we want to put anything, anybody under the age of eighteen should be wearing helmets? I don't, I mean, that's the question I posed to council. I don't know.
If they're under eighteen on motorcycles.
I mean, I've said this before.
Say it again.
If, if we, if we go back to the sixties, seventies, when they had the doom buggy, that's literally what this is. Has, this doom buggy has evolved into this UTV. This U, that's basically what this is. It's, it's, it's a hundred times safer than what the doom buggy was. For example, jump to it. Has, it's equipped with a, there's no, where's I don't even know. They had seatbelts up. I mean, you can go to Cincinnati and watch them drive their, around two seventy five in those doom buggies. You know, when the weather's nice, you can see one just about every time you go. But that's what I think, that's what I see this as. This is what this has evolved to. You don't make that anymore. This is what they're making. They're not wearing a helmet now. In a doom buggy. Unless you're in the, unless you're in the dunes.
No, I think what we were saying though, if you're under eighteen, you have to have an helmet on the motorcycle. Is that correct? So do we want to?
You also don't have a seatbelt on the motorcycle. Or a roadblock. I mean, I do, I know, I know, I know people who had UTVs that put helmets on their children in their, when they, when they're going. It's their, it's their choice. So. That's just my, that's my opinion.
So.
Golf carts and four wheeler are not allowed on city streets.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, no, um, yeah, I say we leave it with, what the ordinance says, that states that golf carts and four wheelers are not allowed on the streets of Greensburg.
What are you talking about? Okay, uh, Jeff?
I just clarified. I was, I was asking about the golf. No, I'm, I'm just, not a taxpayer.
I'll clarify you there.
No, I'm just a taxpayer man. So, no, I was just asking about the golf cart question because I can tell you that when you go out to Fairview Edition or you go out to Millbury Stadium or you go out to the country club stadium. Those folks are driving their golf carts down, my own. And, uh, some of them are, the country club stadium are driving down the road to get the golf course and or just the.
And they've been doing that for years.
They've been doing that for years. And I just asked the question.
There's no ordinance currently that says you cannot ride a golf cart or a lawnmower on city streets.
But if this ordinance goes into effect, then if it has golf carts, will not be allowed on the streets. Just clarification.
I guess they can come to the next meeting and play the field.
I guess they can.
Well, they already know that they can't drive, can't drive downtown.
Well, what's, what's the reasoning behind making that, student golf?
Well, they, they don't go faster, not the one. They don't go faster.
I, I figured that probably would go.
And what for top, that has no more.
But bicycles, it'd be all the same streets, a lot slower than a golf cart.
Well, they can't be enclosed. They, they do have roadblocks. They actually have, there's seatbelts, but your seatbelt is not faster than a UTV. It'll only go like seventeen miles an hour when you get up the street. You don't have a seatbelt for your age.
Our, it's, the one we have, the P D A, you have to be buckled in.
Do we want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We pass, uh, ordinance twenty nineteen dash forty, uh, on first reading.
Okay. Need a second?
Second.
Are we doing any amendments?
Um, the amendment of the ten dollar fee to the.
The amendment of the ten dollar fee. I guess that's it. Amen. Yeah.
Okay, so I got first, second, and so. All very, very high.
Aye.
Close? Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, um. In your package, you see it shouldn't be ordinance twenty nineteen dash thirty seven. And amended to ordinance twenty seventeen dash twenty five, motion for that. As a form, I suppose by stipulation, council, we needed to take out the last sentence in the ordinance, which I think in this one, there are. Did you have an argument? Basically said, the last sentence said whatever you thought was necessary. So just to, to, to take that out and say.
Where are you talking about?
It's not on there. It's actually been. I know we revised this ordinance and I know, I, I think Chris put it together per Indiana code. And I think it drafted word for word based on the code, but they still weren't happy with the way it was read.
So.
I, I move to, uh, doc, ordinance twenty nineteen thirty, thirty seven.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
Aye.
Okay. Awesome. I had gave you, I think you, in the past, you've received this package. On the air conditioning. These are three different ideas. This was the one that we came in and did this and it's the weapons group. They talked about all of what we need to do to upgrade our system. Then there's another group, the M four, um, talking about different costs and have you doing a one or a two or three. Costs, um, eight or thousand to pay, uh, dollar upgrade. or two or three, uh, cost on eight hundred thousand to eight, uh, dollar upgrade. Here's our, our heating system. And then the third one was just basically replacing the boiler and chiller. Uh, this is the technique that does our work now, uh, for us, and so, uh, I want to give you those guys the head up that we need to really kind of, go and start looking at this hard, really hard. We would have to fix the units in each office right this time. They're going to be using the same lines and just be upgrading the chiller and the boiler, uh, replacement parts. And then later down the road, we can start tackling each road, uh, with projects to put out, not the end of one time. So, these are three things that I wanted to let you guys see and know, and it's something to discuss. I talked with Josh again about this today, and so, he's aware of what's going on, and let that, uh, be addressed. Okay? Now, then there should be a holiday traction meeting schedule in there. Just kind of give you a heads up, and let's plan for next year.